Okay. It's August 19th meeting, Marshall County Commissioners' order. Start your agenda off the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jason. Highway departments first.
Morning.
Morning.
Got a few permits.
Thank you. Yeah. Thanks, sir.
You have the permits up, Tori.
There we go.
First group of permits is for CCI Systems. Number one is West 4B, Union to Thorn, Pope Township. Number two is Michigan Road, 6 to 2A, North Township. Number three is 7th to 1200 East to Union Road, Pope Township. Number four is 7th Road, Union Road to Tamarack Road, Pope Township. Number four, excuse me, number five is 7th to Tamarack to Plymouth Port Trail, Pope Township. Number six is North Sycamore to Main to Fourth in Pope Township. Number seven, Olive 4B to Fourth in Pope Township also. Doesn't tell me, are these all, these all Jason boards or cuts? These all?
These are all boards.
These are all boards?
Okay.
Motion to approve?
There's more CCI there.
There's more.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Pope Township. Number eight is Fourth, Quinsta Olive, Pope Township. Number nine is 7th, Parrot to Queen, Pope Township. Number 10 is US 6, Pine to Oak, continues form another permit 2A, which has already been submitted, in Pope Township.
Most to approve is presented second.
Motion made second to approve the 10 permits for CCI. Now, road boards and most of them in Pope Township, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Just a quick update on Bridge 11. The start date on that has been scheduled for March 4th. That'll be 120-day closure, and that is to be reopened on July 31st. That was one that we were looking at for an additional paving project, which was going to have them resurface once they do the bridge deck and just give us a price to do the whole segment of room. So I'll be getting a quote on that. Bridge number one, Yule Trail. The letting on that is November 18th, 2024. Once appraisal is completed, we'll send them to Marshall County for approval. Submitted the environmental permit application. Bridge 232, that's scheduled for October 24th, letting date. Bridge 231, there's no updates from the last. Bridge 88, utility ring locates, and red flag investigation was submitted on 2924. No pond dam improvements. The trees have been removed. We will coordinate with DLZ and have them check the site and review additional work to be completed and plan for future work to be performed. Mitigations, no reports. Roadwork, patching, brush chopping, ditching, working on drow roads, getting ready for 2024 road program. Equipment, getting equipment ready for the 2024 road program, servicing equipment, ordering and stocking parts for inventory and replacement. Submitted for a transfer request to move money from salt to highway equipment. With the mild winter we've had, I look at it, we're going to try to put some of the money that we had into that, into our equipment. A lot of that has to do with teeth and holders for anything that we use for the grinding. So, that's a pretty easy way to just move that over and use it. And that's all I got.
The fuel services agreement needs to be ratified.
Yes, 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 yes. Go. Yes, please.
Just updating that contract with the software. And that'll be for a five-year contract.
And officially, that's Series contract?
Series Solutions.
You want a motion for that, Andrew?
Yeah, what do you motion?
Most to approve the fuel purchase agreement with Series.
Second.
Motion made second to approve the agreement with Series, basically for software upgrade, correct, Jason?
Yep.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Did Michael get your computer out there? I know he was working on it Friday.
I'm thinking that's all part of, this is supposed to happen tomorrow, where everything goes. So they're supposed to come out, transfer everything over, take the fuel off of that one, put it over on the separate one, and actually update the other one.
Okay.
Did Dave Llewellyn get back with you anymore since we talked to him that day?
One more time.
Did Dave Llewellyn get back with you anymore? Did he contact you back since we talked that one day?
I'm trying to think if he did or didn't.
About fiber in your building?
He did, but I do not remember his quotes off the top of my head.
Okay.
But he did mention something about that.
There is, there is a.
Is fiber in there?
Well, there's, he keeps dropping the calls, and they talked to Dave, we talked to Dave on the phone one day, and he said for a small fee, they could run it in and basically take care of the problem.
And I just don't remember what.
It wasn't that much.
Those were.
Yeah. And that's as far as it went that day. Jason was gonna, he was gonna give him a Jason some more to make sure this was gonna work before we did anything. Anything else from Jason?
I do not.
Nope. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Unless you got something else?
No. Like I say, I wish I hadn't thought about it, it was RMC I did, I totally forgot about it. And he did reply back on pricing.
We talked to him twice that day, and then he, there was still some more though for you to check on or something. I just don't remember all the details. Okay, thank you. Marshall County Council on Aging, Janice.
Good morning.
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 I am here to present our quarterly claim for the fourth quarter of 2023. We had a total expenses of 167,533, and we took in $13,022 for fares, leaving us a net expense of 154,511. So that'll be half, the claim is for half the expenses to end dot, so 77,255, and then the rest is local match. Just some stats for the quarter, we did 7,013 trips, and that brought us to a new record for the year of 29,195 trips. Those trips were spread across, we did serve 1,108 people on our transit for 2023. The, the trips were up. I think I put on there that the previous record was in 2019, and then once COVID hit, we kind of, the bottom kind of fell out, and we've been creeping back up ever since. But, so it's, those trips were an 8% increase over last year, but our denials, if you can see, were 712 this year, and that's a 56% increase. So the, the demand is still going up, up, up. So we're trying, I think probably the only reason we could do as many as we did is because our new software that we got, we started in January of 23, so that's definitely helped our efficiency. So now if we can get maybe more, more vehicles or expand our hours, we'll, we'll keep going up, because the demand is there.
You still looking for drivers?
Currently, we have enough to cover.
Okay.
But if we get more vehicles, then we could use more drivers.
Yeah.
Seems to always be, you know, one of three things, money, drivers, or vehicles. And right now, it's vehicles.
You have anything else for her? You need a motion to approve, to accept your report?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion to accept her quarterly financial report.
Second.
Motion made second to accept the report from Marshall County Council on Agent. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
For the, for the claim.
Oh, okay.
To sign the claim.
Most to approve the claim.
Is that one signature or three signatures?
That is one signature.
Doc, you sign.
Uh, nope, I actually have it right there.
Okay. Most to approve the claim as presented with the president signing.
Second.
Motion made second to have the president sign the claim as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Janice. Treasurer, Sandy, are you filling in today?
I'm filling in today.
Okay. Good to see you.
Good morning.
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 You've got a couple of things on the agenda here?
Yes. So the first one is the LND Mailmasters. This is a contract that we have to send out the tax forms. Our date is April 5th, I believe, is the target date.
For the mailing?
Yes.
This is pretty much the same contract as last year, correct?
Yes.
Jim, you approved it? You looked at it?
Yeah, it's almost identical, there was one little.
They corrected it, and I sent you a corrected one. Yeah, that was corrected.
I'll make a motion to approve the LND Mailmasters agreement.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the Mailmasters, excuse me, LND Mailmasters agreement. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And then the next item is a confidentiality agreement for the innkeepers. And I may defer a little bit to ENG on this, but as I understand it, it is, the way I understand it, is the, we get a total for the month that's collected. And what this confidentiality agreement allows us to do is to put together a report that we can determine which townships it comes from, correct?
Yes, the, the Department of Revenue collects 100% of our innkeepers and then returns it back to us monthly. But when they send a report, they won't share any information, because it's all proprietary, unless this is in place. This was in place when I was treasurer. They can then send a report, that report, the treasurer's office can look at and then use that report to say, this is how much this taxing district got. So it, this allows them to share that proprietary information, just between the Department of Revenue and the treasurer's office.
And only as the amounts for the township, not individual?
Correct.
So basically, we just refer to these Indiana Department of Revenue agreements, correct? Are we?
Yes, this is the only way you're going to be able to know how much each taxing district's receiving in tax dollars, or in the innkeeper's taxes, by having this agreement in place, because they will send the report, the treasurer's office will then have to go through and take that report, redact the information, then they can provide a report to commissioners, council, whoever's requesting, saying, this is how much the 019 taxing district got, this is how much 011 got, this is how, going, that's the only way to get that information.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the Indiana Department of Revenue agreements?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made second to approve the Indiana Department of Revenue agreements. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And the next item is an amendment to ordinance that had not been amended, I believe, since 2000. It's ordinance 1985-6 establishing the penalty for insufficient funds, and it was set at $20. And we had a board of finance meeting and approved that to be moved to $35.
That is correct.
So this is just bringing it to the commissioners.
I'll make. Motion to approve the increase from $20 to $35 for insufficient funds checks presented.
Second.
Motion made second to approve ordinance 2024-9, non-sufficient fund check fees from $20 to $35. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And then the last item.
Before you move on to that, are you doing that on three readings? Are you doing that?
Think about it, you want to suspend the rules?
I would make a motion to suspend the rules and approve the ordinance 2024-9 on second and third reading.
Second.
Motion made second to suspend the rules on ordinance 2024-9 on second and third readings. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, and the last item that I am bringing before you is the extended hours for tax collection of 2024. And I think you all have a copy of those. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Are you still set up for the extra security for these hours?
We will be, once they're approved.
Okay.
Most to approve the extended hours for tax collection 2024.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the extended tax collection hours for 2024 for the treasurer's office. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And that's all we have.
That it?
That's it.
Anyone have anything for Sandy?
No, thank you, Sandy.
Thank you, Sandy.
Thanks for filling in.
You're welcome.
City of Plymouth. Jeff, you covering for Steve today?
I am, I think Steve was planning to be here, but you're running a little ahead of schedule, so I'll take care of it. We don't need him.
Okay. And why don't you, for the sake of the public, why don't you just give a little?
Jeff, who am I, Plymouth City Attorney, 124 North Michigan Street in Plymouth.
Why don't you give a little update, what?
Absolutely.
What your quest is.
So you all know that the Plymouth Fire Department operates a fire training facility at the county jail property. The Fire Department received some grant funding to provide a fire hydrant at that training facility, so that they can expand the types of training that they do. It was determined by the city utility department, it would be much cheaper and more efficient to connect to the current water line that provides fire suppression to the jail, rather than running an entirely new line all the way out to the main service lines at the street. So I prepared the agreement and sent it to Attorney Clevenger, that would allow the city of Plymouth to connect to the existing water line. A meter will be installed on that new line, so that the city can monitor any water usage to that hydrant and determine what city department will be responsible for paying for that water usage. There will be no charge to the county. My understanding is the line is only used for fire suppression, so there's, under normal circumstances, there's no water usage anyhow, and the county is not charged for water usage currently. We just wanted to make sure an agreement was in place to reassure you that the county would not be charged for any of the water usage to the new fire hydrant. And also some indemnification language, so that if it does cause any problems for the jail or the fire suppression system, that the city will be responsible for remediating those problems. We don't think it will, we just want to make sure that you're protected and comfortable with it.
And you, you've looked at this. I think, you know, the fact that they're, it's all at their expense, and they're going to make sure, you know, there's no interference with our usage or whatever, I mean, I didn't see anything, problem with it. So I think I added your, your names for signature and attested by the auditor, so.
Yeah, and if you approve this agreement today, we'll take it to the Plymouth Board of Public Works and Safety next Monday at their meeting, and have them approve it also, so that everybody is in agreement.
Aren't there other fire departments that utilize that?
Yeah, it's, it's made available, I, I don't know the exact procedure right now, I'm still pretty new at all this, but I know that there are other departments that use it for training, and the state is, is using it as kind of a central hub for regional training activities. So the, the use is expanding, and we expect it to continue to expand, and this just allows for one more type of training that can be done there at the facility.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the agreement, the MOU between the City of Plymouth and Marshall County for the fire training facility and the water hookup.
Second.
Motion made second to approve the MOU agreement between the City of Plymouth Fire Department and Marshall County for the new water line hookup to access the training facility. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll hang up. Or you can email it to me if you want.
Thank you.
Ty, we have a public hearing?
Not until. Yes, sir.
What time?
10:00.
10:00.
Got about 20 minutes, but you also have an.
Why don't you do the annual report first?
That's okay if we flip those two.
There's that MOU.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ty.
Sure. Thank you.
There's the MOU.
So we'll skip towards the end of the presentation, which actually has, there we go. So for the annual report, I'll just kind of jump through things a little bit with you. We went ahead and did a quarterly tracking in relationship to the last three years, 21, 22, and 23. You can see how the numbers have been adjusting over the course of that time. We were down in relationship for first and second quarter last year. Third and fourth quarters, we were up, and you can see we've been relatively stable over the last three years. And then you kind of look at the bottom picture, we're up significantly in relationship to the value in comparison between the cost permits. The, I say a lot of that's going to be attributed to the cause and effect in relationship with the monetary value of different items have gone up drastically, so you're beginning to see a lot of compounding in relationship to that. We've also got a couple very large projects in Marshall County going on currently, that are also attributing to that as well. Looking at the 15-year comparison, you can see how we've been trending upwards and have so over the last several years. One point on that, if you look at the last five years, the average permit has been over 1,000 permits per year, which is drastically higher than the 15-year average of just shy of 700. Looking at the permits by jurisdiction, we went ahead and broke that all down for you. Over, just under 1,100 permits. The majority, of course, is going through the county, larger landmass. And then Culver being the next, Bremen following, Argus, then Bourbon. If you want to break that out, down in terms of percentages, county's issuing about 56% of the permits for their jurisdiction. Culver is just shy of 20%, Bremen 10%, Argus 7.8, and Bourbon 6.8. So the overwhelming majority is still going through the county, but there's still several permits going through the different jurisdictions. Looking at a brief in terms of the evaluation and permit change over the last three years, again, relatively stable, anything between 1072 and 1105. Those were both in 2022 and 2021 respectively, so landing right in the middle of that for '23, so we're still pretty much on par. But what you can see is a massive change in difference for the evaluation in permits and costs. '21 has been essentially doubled, which at that time was extremely high. So to go from 76, almost 77 million, to 145 million is a massive change. And then between the two, in 2022, you're looking at 94 million, so you're still up substantially from there. Getting into kind of the brief of the rest of the report, without having to flip through all the pages, BZI cases are down from '22 to '23. Planning Commission cases are tripled from '22 to '23. These splits have gone down a bit. Splits, for reference, are those administrative abilities to do subdivisions out in the agricultural area, whether it be adjusting property lines or buying and selling woodland or farm ground, giving an acre to your kid to kind of will down. All those usually go through that split procedure. Then looking at the 2023 work program, things we did and worked to accomplish. The subdivision ordinance began, we still are about halfway through that, so I anticipate about a six-month process, just to get that back in front of the planning commission. That wouldn't take into consideration the timeframe it would take for planning commission to review, make their recommendations and any changes they see. And then whenever that gets all accomplished, it would come back before you, as the county commissioners, to adopt a mandate or what have you with that ordinance. Currently, we're under the solar farm ordinance revisions, and those are proposed, and we're going through that review process. And then the battery storage placed a moratorium, and so we're a few months into that as well. So the 2024 work program, we're looking to wrap up any solar farm revisions that are requested of us, and then moving forward into the battery storage proposal, using that time during the moratorium to do research and bring that around. That'll be coming through the planning commission later this week as its initial proposal, but I would suspect additional amendments, take it under review, those sorts of things. And then there's some additional items about communication towers to bring those into conformance with state and federal regulations that have been adopted within the last five to 10 years that aren't in conformance with our current regulations, so we need to bring those into alignment. Commissioner Clowes, we brought in the carbon sequestration and carbon capture, you and I talked a little bit about that, wanted to do some more research. But we got a couple items ahead that need to get taken care of first, and then we'll get into the carbon sequestration and go into that. And then pending where all of that begins to land us, we'll get back into the subdivision ordinance to get that wrapped up, because there's several items that have drug out different subdivision approvals for different community members, that we believe that some of the amendments we're proposing will make it a lot simpler and a lot faster, to be able to get them taken care of when it's only a one-lot subdivision or a lot line adjustment outside of the ag area. Any comments, questions on the annual report?
I don't have any.
Oh, is that the annual report?
That's, that's the gist of it. Everything else is kind of spelled out for it, but I figured I'd give you the high tops.
Have you, I was, I haven't been up north of Plymouth lately on Michigan Road. How is the gentleman doing up there at the old?
He's got his fence up, and we allowed him to do that, to be able to help secure the facility. He's in the middle of a comment and response period with his secondary plan, that he's got to get approved before he's able to begin going forward with additional construction and those sorts of things. So we got our comments out last week, and so we're waiting some engineering updates, those sorts of things, to get additional items clarified, and make sure we have all the proper documentation to be able to permit him to move forward, should he meet all those conditions and everything.
Okay.
If you don't mind, I'm gonna, since we got 10 minutes, 12 minutes before we start the public hearing.
Completely understand.
I want Jim to do his attorney report, you can just sit there.
As you wish.
If you're okay with that. We'll just, that way we don't waste the time. Jim, you got your attorney report?
Okay. Attorney report, believe it or not, I've got several action items for you this morning. The first one I have is the county tourism board, but I see that's on your commissioner item, so I don't know whether you want to wait and take that after, later, or what you want to do about the third reading of that ordinance, that would kind of reestablish the county tourism board and go from there. It's, I guess that's up to you, what you guys want to do.
We'll do it a bit later, okay?
Okay, that'd be fine. This is an FYI, the QCC agreement, the sheriff preferred that I try to, I guess, negotiate some modifications to the proposed contract for the medical services at the jail. I've reached out to Lisa Scroggins, the QCC CEO. If, one of the things was in the indemnity clause, to try and add defend to the indemnity clause, to try and give us a little more ammunition, that they provide attorney fees for defense of cases that are primarily medical claims as opposed to jail-related claims. And the other thing is, I tried to suggest maybe they ought to increase their policy limits. Their limits are significantly, they're a million dollars, but they are less than ours, and now we've run into some issues with that, and, and so, I haven't heard back from her, so I'll follow up. I really don't expect probably that she's going to want to make any changes, but at least we'll see and get affirmative no. Under the jail repair item, I have a draft of, of a, I guess, request for proposals to send out to, I guess, engineering architectural firms that might be able to assist in the jail repair project. On the draft that I have put together, I thought it might be helpful for somebody curious about it. curious about it to contact somebody in Marshall County. So I guess I'm looking to you to see if one of the three, if you want to be that contact person, whether we want to have the maintenance guy out at the?
Probably John Greer.
Hi, John, be the best. Okay. And I, I mean, at this point, my proposal was is to send specific RFP to, to some of the engineering firms that we've done business with, and then also probably just post a notice and see how that, see how that goes. I originally set this up that we would receive all of them at a certain time, and I, and I think I'll still leave it that way. And so then we just get them, open them, take them under advisement and decide. You know, this is a situation where it's, I can easily foresee we're going to have quotes on different items of work. And it may very well be, you know, we, we will go with, you know, somebody that's asking, you know, proposing more work as opposed to less work. As, you know, it, it's going to be a little bit of a complicated thing. So I'm trying to spell that out, that this isn't one of these things that the low number is automatically the winner on this thing. So. And we can get away with that. I mean, it's engineering services, it doesn't have to be bid. So, you know, you guys normally, you know, try to figure out who you're going to hire on some of these road projects and so forth. It's, it's different than that. But, but, and I've emphasized, may need some specialties in some concrete repair kinds of activities. So I'll put John in, and if you want, I'll just go ahead and send that out and publish it.
Are we going to open this up to whoever wants to bid, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Because I know Jamie made a comment, there was an individual, I think in Toledo, Ohio, that specialized in concrete work. He'd worked with stuff like this before, you know? And that was just one of his suggestions. And I know John's got an outfit from, I want to say Cosco County, it's already inquired if we do this, so.
I got an inquiry from JPR.
I know DLC's interested.
And DLC is probably interested.
Yeah. Andy said they were interested.
BS Engineering's interested, too.
I'm sure, I'm sure they all are. Yep, that's fine. I just send it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to try to catch all of them and then, but also put some notice out.
Yep, that'd be good.
Okay.
Do you need a motion for that?
Yes, please.
Do I have a motion? Have Jim move forward?
I'll make a motion to have Jim move forward with the scope for the engineering for the jail repairs.
Second.
Motion made second to have Jim move forward with the scope for jail repairs. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And I'll touch base with John so he isn't caught by a surprise.
Yeah.
Okay. Next kind of action item is having to do with opioid litigation. And we received a bankruptcy court notice requesting kind of our input from, related to the Endo International's bankruptcy plan. Our attorneys, Cohen and Mallett, are prepared to basically vote for us as to what, what option that we want. And they have recommended that we select the option abstain from voting and, and to opt out for the part releasing the principles of Endo International. The corporation has, you know, a bunch of principal people primarily in this thing. And the plan, I think, that's submitted would release the individuals from personal liability and just told the company to pay out whatever that amount is, it's going to be paid out. And our people have said, I, I, I don't recommend that you vote to let that happen. And this is what they're doing is abstain from the voting and opt out of releasing them. And I think that's a, the best thing for our protection and, you know, let, 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 let that go forward to see how that shakes out. So I'm looking for a motion to approve that recommendation to abstain from voting and to opt out of releasing the principals of Endo International in their bankruptcy plan.
So you can take care of that, or at least contact them and take care of that for us?
Yes, I can take care of that. I'll, I'll communicate with John Noel down at Cohen and Mallett.
I'll make a motion to?
Make that vote.
We select the option abstain from voting and to opt out of releasing a host of Endo International principals.
Second.
Motion made second to have Jim contact our attorneys to select the opt-out option. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
That, just kind of a follow-up, I don't know if you remember, but Purdue Pharmacy, the distributor of opioids, filed bankruptcy. And their, their original plan sort of released the Sackler family, if you remember, or, or maybe the Sackler family was only going to put in so much money. And that continues to be a case on appeal as to what's going on with that. So that's, there's not money coming from that. But it's the same sort of thing, I guess, as well. And just as a follow-up on that, I've been advised that the pharmacy money is supposed to come in from Brown Greer first quarter. But that's to the AG's office, and they don't have exactly immediate turnaround. So don't hold your breath that you're going to get any more opioid money from the pharmacy right away.
Their money doesn't match their reports anyway, so.
Thank you for that. We'll take care of that. Going further, new business health department lease. Talked to Sandy Dunphy. She couldn't be here today. She was going to try to skip Doc Colom here, but I don't think she was able to get him here either. Their lease with the Community Resource Center has expired. The landlord folks are looking for a new lease, or they would allow the county to go on a month-to-month basis, the rent would be $16 per square foot, or monthly rental $3,300. That's higher than what they're paying now. We would have to give the landlord 90 days' notice on that to change it around. Sandy says that she has that monthly rental of $3,300 in her budget because she knew that was probably something that's going on. I, I think she's requesting that we go ahead and authorize the month-to-month arrangement, the lease for the time being.
Just a note on that, I was going to send you guys an email. This happened late Friday. Judge Sharber set up a, a conference call I was in on to discuss community corrections and their situation. And I did bring this up. While we're doing this, can we find a way to kill two birds with one stone? And there might be some options out there, but for the time being, it was discussed about going month-to-month, so keeping options open for the county.
Yeah.
But I'll send you guys some details later.
Both those tenants are looking to do.
And I think community corrections is in, in the 25, I believe, their lease runs through, too.
I, I don't know. I'd have to go take a look.
I asked them to check and see if there was an opt-out by any means if something did happen, so.
But both need, they, both think they need more space.
Yeah.
And.
And Sandy's checked in the building, more of that basement out, but it's an ungodly amount.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it leaves them, you know, not the greatest situation. So, anyway, I guess.
On the other hand, the owners of them said they would look at selling the, the building to the county.
They did.
They did.
And their recent, recent new owners, too.
The new, yeah.
Well, anyway, looking for a motion to, you know, go forward with the month-to-month lease.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made second to allow the health department to continue with a month-to-month rate for leasing their facilities. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
We took care of the MOU with the water line access with the city of Plymouth. We took care of the LND Mail Masters agreement, kind of related to the city of Plymouth MOU. Last year, we had an MOU for building inspector services because Steve Howard was away for time, and the city was nice enough to cover for us. The suggestion has been made to enter a mutual and reciprocal MOU so that the city will cover for our county guy when he's on vacation. And likewise, when their city guy's on vacation, the county guy would cover for them. And if that's agreeable with all of you, I'd like to draft an MOU to, for our review and possible forwarding to the city to have such an agreement.
Makes sense.
Yep. There is, there is also an option that if we get in a bind, Steve had said, depending on his health, he might consider helping us out part-time if we got in that kind of a bind. So. But yeah, this would at least get the ball rolling. Do you have a motion to have Jim to move forward?
I'll make a motion to have Jim move forward with a MOU between the city and the county on exchanging services for the building inspectors.
Second. You have something else to add?
No.
Motion made and second to have Jim move forward with creating an MOU for, between the county and the city of Plymouth for sharing building inspector services. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Is that all you have, Jim?
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Okay, Ty, we're after it. So we have a public hearing scheduled for 24-PC-01, ordinance 2024-8. You want to go ahead and make your report?
I would love to.
If you can get it to work, right?
Maybe.
That doesn't sound good.
It's singing.
It's going great.
Huh?
It's going great.
Yeah.
I made it all go black.
I can give you the general if you wish, and then I can jump into more specifics when we get into the presentation, if that works for you.
Sure, go ahead.
So what's being proposed at 4860 Underwood Road, southeast of Coontail Lake, on Underwood Road, right by the ditch, is Mr. Rippey owns a property that's currently zoned L1 Lake Residential. They're wanting to rezone that to A3 Agricultural Residential. And the big purpose behind that is the father lives on the property to the north of a larger parcel, and he and his son are essentially wanting to swap properties in order to not have to maintain such a large acreage. And the reason for rezoning it is so they could subdivide it between him and another family member. But because of the size of the original parcel, it's not big enough. Cool. Thank you. So jumping to the case, they have a seeking to rezone property from A1 Agricultural District to A3 Agricultural District. My apologies, I said Lake Residential, it's A1. Lake Residential's to the north and just about everything else. So a quick analysis, they have a seeking to rezone their property from A1 Agricultural Residential to A3 Agricultural Residential. This will change their ability to, for the residential density itself. They will be wanting to subdivide the property into two pieces in order for the parcels to be able to build a retirement home. They're wanting to use the John Glenn Building Trades class for the home construction. The property is 3.6 acres, and under the A1 district, you can subdivide the property down to an acre in size with a parent tract, having to be 10 acres or a density of one unit per five acres. So a, this adjustment to the same one-acre unit, when you go to A3, has a one-acre density rule versus a one-to-five acre. One of the complications that will come with the development of the site will be the minimal road frontage that it has, and the existing county ditch that's on the south side of the property. Provided the rezoning is approved, they will pursue the minor subdivision that'll come before the planning commission as well in the future, provided that this is successful. So when I flip it over to a side-by-side comparison, you have satellite imagery with the drainage ditch and floodplain associated with it. Here, on the left-hand side, on the right-hand side, you can see Lake Residential is everything to the north of that, which includes the father's current property. So essentially, they're going to be flipping ownership and then splitting the southern parcel that's highlighted. In order to do that, is the density issue that A1 provides, unless you've got 10 acres or greater, the ability to subdivide is not as simple. It would require additional variances, all those sorts of things. But given the size of the parcel, it was more advantageous to recommend the rezoning process for them. So it's going to be up for commercial determination with the recommendation that came out of the planning commission 70. We had two not in attendance that night. So is everybody in favor that was in attendance? Staff in TRC did recommend approval of that rezoning from A1 to A3. That is everything I have.
Want to have any questions for Ty?
I do not.
Motion, open public hearing?
So moved.
Second. Motion made second open public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Anyone here who want to speak on behalf of this, this amended zoning map for the Rippeys, please stand, state your name and address, and tell us why, what your thoughts are? Anyone want to come forward? Anyone? Motion closed.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Motion made second, close public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
I'll make a motion that we approve 24-PC-01, ordinance number 2024-8 on first reading.
I second.
Motion made second to approve 24-PC-01, ordinance 2024-8 on first reading, amend the zoning map. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and pass ordinance number 2024-8 on second and third reading.
Second.
Motion made second to suspend the rules and go ahead and pass ordinance 2024-8 on second and third reading, which would be at 4860 Underwood Road. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
Auditor's report.
One thing that we did retain last week that I had sent to Jim as well to review or spoke with him about it, our attendance-on-demand time system is now changing names to time management systems. I spoke with Mindy Kroll, who is the CEO, and she said nothing is changing, just the name. So our, what we're paying every month, everything else stays exactly the same. We just need to acknowledge that they have the name changed.
Jim, did you check this out? Everything, we're good?
Uh, I didn't. I mean, I looked at it, yeah. We talked, and I, you know, apparently just reason for the change is because they're changing their names, so.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the name change to time management for the auditor's office.
Second. Motion made and second that we acknowledge the name change to time management systems agreement for the auditor's office. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
And I have your February 5th minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made second to approve the February 5th minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
I have your February 5th executive session minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made second to approve the executive session minutes from February 5th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
And I have your claims.
Motion to approve the claims as presented.
Second.
Motion made second to approve the claims as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Anything else?
That is all I have.
Thank you. Anyone here, we have public comments? Anyone here have a, Sheriff, I see you, show up. Anyone have public comments? Hang on one second, sir, you'll be next.
Good morning.
Morning.
The.
State your name, state, you know, you have a status for the record, okay?
Matthew Hassel, Sheriff.
Yes, go ahead.
The Bremen Police Department reached out to me. All the radio equipment we replaced last year, we couldn't even trade in the old radio equipment because it's obsolete. Motorola no longer supports it. And we can't even use it as a backup because it runs on a whole different operator sys, operating system than what the new stuff runs on. So, but the, the equipment is out at the CD building now, just sitting there. So, but the, the equipment is out at the CD building now, just sitting there. But the equipment there is newer than what the equipment Bremen has right now in their dispatch center. And they would like to take that off our hands if we're willing to let go of it. So I'm just here to see if the commission will approve allowing Bremen Police Dispatch Center to use that equipment.
And according to Zach, my understanding, there's any charges, upgrades, or anything they're gonna cover. There's no expense to ask, correct?
Yeah, there's no, you, you just, you can't upgrade it, you can't, it's just no longer usable because the, the company that built the equipment doesn't even support it anymore. It's kinda like technology, you know? As the years go by, the, the stuff drops off any support for it at all. And then you, now you, some places you can't even get replacement parts if you do, if it does break down.
Is that on the asset list?
That's what I was gonna ask. Do we have to do a transfer of asset?
I think if we do this, I think we should probably have an MOU so we know where the equipment came from and where the equipment went to. If it's still on an asset list, I don't know if it is or not.
I would have to look to see if it.
Yeah, I.
I don't know.
It was put in the, when we built the new jail, it was, that was put in then.
Was it?
Yeah, I don't know if it ever got listed or not.
It's probably depreciated off since then, as long as that building has been there. But I, I could not tell you until I actually verified it.
I have a problem with it if it wasn't, I just wanna make sure that.
What if we approved it today to move forward and then check the asset list? Is that gonna give them timing, or is it a rush?
Do what now?
Is it a rush?
No.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve that we allow the Bremen Police Department to have the old radios, subject to verification of them not being on our asset list.
Second.
Motion made, second, to allow Bremen to use the old radios that we have stored, subject to making sure it's not on our asset list. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Yes, sir, you had your hand up back here. Come on up. Have a seat, and please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Casey Nightlinger, one six six eight two fourteen B Road Culver. I just wanted to address something I've heard some chatter about lately, the issue of data centers, which apparently came up and wasn't really discussed much afterwards. But I, I just wanna understand why and how anybody can see that as a positive development for the community, how in any way, shape, or form that benefits us, when something like that would use massive amounts of power and water that we need for agriculture and our own usage, especially with increased electrical usage with EVs and a lot of other things. I don't, I don't understand how, you know, from our perspective, from a county, why we would want this? Why, why you would be discussing bringing something like that here?
Did you say a, a data center?
Yeah.
Oh, I hadn't.
That was talked about a couple of years ago, if I, if I understood it correctly, on the planning commission.
That was talked about years and years ago. The state legislators were, I think Representative Heim was still down there at the state legislative. They were talking about data centers. But I, that's, this is first I've heard about it.
I thought it came up last week, if I understood correctly.
It come up, and it was in our report earlier about working this four, this year, the planning commission looking at, that was one of the items for.
To me, it just seems like a vicious downward circle. You have to turn Barrowak, Indiana into a sea of glass to generate power for something that we don't want. How, and how, and does that help us? I don't get it. Please help me.
Well, it hasn't happened yet. That's all I'll say at this point in time. What, what's gonna happen going forward, I can't say.
I just wanna say that, that's not something that most people that actually live here want. That's all.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else have any public comments? Yeah, yes, ma'am. Yes, three minutes, and please keep the three minutes, I'm sorry, I forgot, yes.
Janelle Prochnow Naylor, one six five four one, Robert Court, Plymouth, Indiana, four six five six three. A statement was made to Marshall County citizens from the planning director. That property value guarantee was not in any ordinances throughout the surrounding counties. Recently, we have two nearby counties that have them in their current ordinances, Cosco and Fulton County, which is his hometown, was adopted at the end of last year, which states, property value guarantee will be offered by the solar developer to all residents and landowners within two miles of a CES, which is Commercial Solar Energy System. Fair market value will be established by, at a minimum, two reputable appraisers of the Cosco and Fulton County Plan Commission's choice to establish a baseline data for property values at the solar developer's expense. If the property value of a home decreases and a home or landowner is unable to sell his property after the CES is erected, the developer will pay the landlord the difference or buy the property at the baseline fair market value determined prior to construction of the solar project. Since we found these two counties that have property value guarantee in their ordinances, isn't this the time period to amend this ordinance? We are asking that this amendment to be sent back to the planning commission to have that reviewed again. Let's get it right for Marshall County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and I have documentation that states their ordinances for that. There is no property value guarantee whatsoever.
You give me two, Janelle. You give me two, Janelle. That's all, okay, Clark, you got enough, that's fine. In my understanding, the reason they're the same is because basically Fulton just adopted Cosco County's ordinance, so. Anyone else have any public comments? Debbie.
Good morning, Debbie Van Damarc, one four seven five zero Tulip Road Culver. I would also like to share some information that came from, these are statements from realtors in Michigan about property value guarantees.
Go ahead.
And, and these folks can be contacted if you have questions, but there is a big concern about property values. And that's one of the things that the community has been bringing up over and over in these meetings is, you know, we need to have further setbacks, we need to have property value guarantees. Some folks are gonna be surrounded by these projects and very concerned about it. And I think that's, you know, the main reason that we've been asking for the moratorium is, and you know, Farm Bureau requested a moratorium. Our county council is, voted seven to zero requesting a moratorium. There's some things in our ordinance that we still feel need to be addressed for this county. And so I wanted to share that information with you. And then also, I'd like to ask a question. So, we ended the last meeting on second reading, which there was a motion and then a no. Are we still on second reading for this ninety days? Are you, are you gonna bring that up again, or is second reading done?
We're, we're gonna have discussion a little bit, Debbie.
Okay, I don't, I just didn't know.
I put it on the agenda, just have discussion, I don't know what's gonna happen, but.
It seems to me we still have a second reading because it wasn't amended, adopted, or rejected, so. I don't know that. Is that correct? Maybe? Don't know. Okay, that's it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any public comments? If not, seeing none, we'll move on now. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to commissioners' items. We have the OKRA MCEDC Micro Loan Program.
This was the letter that Jenny Monroe spoke about at the last meeting.
Right.
I think we just have to have adopt that and have Stan sign that, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
I'll make a motion that we approve the OKRA and the MCEDC Micro Loan Program Letter with the president of the commissioners signing.
Second. Motion made, second, to approve the OKRA letter with the president of the board signing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Find my agenda here.
Tourism.
Next, we have the twenty twenty-four day street tourism commission, third reading. Jim, I, I was asked a question, my understanding, so I have clarification. We approve this on third reading. This is just a commission, you still have another nonprofit that's gotta, gotta pay the bills unless the county does it, and I don't want the county to do it. So who, who appoints that nonprofit, or does the commission appoint that? What happens here?
I assume that the present commission contracted with the nonprofit Visitors Bureau to distribute funds or so forth. I haven't seen that contract, so I don't know, but if, but there is a new commission, if, if they're gonna, I mean, I, I think they would need to look at and decide what they wanna do with that Visitors Bureau kinda thing. They, they may not have any interest in continuing those, that at all, I don't know. But the, the, the problem is, from my understanding, is, is the Visitors Bureau is made up of the same people that's on the board, so.
You mean, you mean presently?
Presently, yeah.
Yeah, correct.
So, you know, I, I, you know, it may very well be that the Visitors Bureau is having a very important function that the tourism board wants to continue. I, I, I don't know.
Correct me, correct me if I'm wrong, when we, when we approve this on third reading, then they would make the decision going forward, correct?
The tour, the, when you approve this on third reading, you're gonna have to make the, establish the tourism board, you have to make the appointments, but yes, that commission then will decide.
Yeah, okay.
What's going on from then.
I just want, I just want clarification, make sure, that's the way I understood it, I wanna make sure. So, we have third reading for the tourism board to pass. I lost my agenda somewhere.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash three on third reading.
Second. Motion made, second, approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash three, the tourism commission on third reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So now, do we need to?
I suggested, I think you need to set up a process by which you're gonna take applications, nominations, and, you know, review who's gonna do their thing. We need to obviously inform the, the mayor, he's, he needs to.
Point two.
Make two appointments.
Right.
And, you know, depending on who the mayor appoints, that may have some bearing on, on your, how you're going to align things. I mean, if he points to people that don't have any, any, don't meet the criteria of the statute, then to get to a majority of board members, you're gonna be required to, you know, try to, try to appoint members that, that meet the statutory requirements.
And at least four of those have to meet the statutory requirements of having.
Four of the seven, yeah.
Four of the seven have to meet the requirement set by the state that involves promoting or having to do with tourism.
They either are directly involved in the tourism convention business or promote or encourage. That's correct.
And how would you?
I would say we do it the same way we did the super district board. We.
Have them turn them in?
Have them turn them in, we interview them, and then we pick them in a public meeting.
I, I would also like to see the towns have the option, which they would.
They will.
To, to turn their.
Yeah.
Turn their suggestions in because.
And I would think, you know, you would be smart in appointing a town representative or more so as to address their concerns and interests. I mean, I, you know, I, that's you guys' business, but that, I would.
Well, if they have representation, though, they're not gonna be coming back.
That's what you want.
Because you've got representation, so.
That's what you want, and I, I would think you would do that.
And there's nothing to prohibit the people that are currently on this board from reapplying.
Reapplying.
But it's just so that we, Marshall County is in compliance with the new state statute.
So I guess.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think you can just reappoint all of the people there, because then you're not gonna be in compliance, but.
Right.
Certainly, you know.
So would you guys be in favor of having anybody that has an application just turn it to the auditor's office for us, then go in and review and set up?
But probably have something put in the paper or something on our website that we are seeking.
Applications.
Applications for the Marshall County Tourism Board, and then.
Yeah, set a date and have them.
Have them turned in by April first.
I was gonna say, but, yeah.
That'd be fine.
And then interview April and establish it first of June or something.
Yeah. Sounds like plan.
So, Angie, do you, do you advertise that, or who advertises that?
I think we have HR do that.
We have HR do it, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
You're, you're talking about advertising, you're talking about like putting a little notice in the paper.
Right.
Maybe.
And on our website.
On our website.
That says, we're taking applications.
Taking resumes for. Visitors. Tourism Board.
Board, commission members. By, submit them to the auditor's office by, yeah.
April first.
Whatever.
Okay. Do we need a vote? We don't need to vote on that, do we?
You know, I would.
Okay. Do you have a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Whatever that motion is.
I'll make a motion that we, we have the auditors and the HR department work on a.
Notice?
Notice that we are accepting resumes for visitors and bureau tourism for Marshall County, and that all applicants must be mailed in by April first.
I would say be in the office by.
In the office, April first.
Quite a fine.
Which I don't know what date that is.
I think that's on Monday, because I believe you guys have a meeting.
Okay.
That day.
April Fool's Day.
Yeah.
Second. Motion made, made and seconded to have notice sent out that we're accepting applications for the Marshall County Tourism Bureau, whether it's the towns or whether it's individuals, that they have them submitted, the HR will handle it, but they'll have them submitted to the auditor's office by April first. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay. I, I put this next gen on solar discussion because last meeting, like Debbie brought up, it, it, basically, the amendments died for lack of a second. Now, there's no action taken, it's my understanding, in ninety days, they will automatically take effect if they're not voted down. Again, I'll go back to the fact, I, I just have some concerns, real concerns. Brought up on property values and stuff like that, that's been discussed before, but to no avail. My biggest concern is, I look back here, and I, I know there's things that could change next year with this election this fall, with the presidential election, whether, whether the subsidies go away or not. My biggest, my biggest problem is, I, I, I have a little bit different than the others because there's nothing in here that protects Marshall County or these landowners that guarantees these companies are responsible for their project. If there's a failure, it all falls back on us. And I just don't understand what's so unreasonable about that, why we seem to have a problem with that. So I'm, I may be beating a dead horse, but I'm gonna make a motion to put a moratorium until May first, twenty twenty-five, on solar irreversible moratorium, until May first, twenty twenty-five, based on the fact that we need to send it back to the planning commission and put guidelines in here that totally protect this county and the landowners from any loss in values. Do I have a second? I'll ask a second time, do I have a second? Being none, motion fails. I also know there was discussion last week about moving forward. Some of these solar companies wanna move forward the project. There was discussion having Jim, whether we should have Jim move forward with the decommissioning stuff, and I don't think we can do that.
Talked to the attorney for Tamarack Solar after the last meeting. I talked to the attorney for Tamarack Solar after the last meeting and she wants to, you know, apply for a permit and one of the, under the existing regulations, you know, she needs a road use agreement, but, and that's between the county and the highway, or the county and the highway department and the company, so that if they tear up the roads or do whatever else, they get repaired. And then also they need a decommissioning agreement and they, Tamarack has submitted both a road use agreement and a decommissioning agreement. In fact, we've had it for months, you guys told me to sit on it while we tried to sort through that stuff, so that's what I've been doing. And, you know, they, they need that as part of the, of the item. I will tell you that I've talked to Jason at the highway, we have some proposals to, to suggest under the road use agreement, and I'd like to, you know, if, if you want, I can put those together and we can, you know, review those and see if that's what we want to go back to them with. And then I also talked to Ty about the decommissioning. And I mean, you know, it's, the, the proposed agreement is talking about a pretty significant bond, I mean, it's, there's a lot of, a lot of money that's going to be theoretically set aside for security so that if these panels are not being used or whatever else, they get them taken out and the property restored. And we have, in talking with Ty, there's some ideas that we also think we should talk about changing with, on the proposed agreement. But then there's some other things, I mean, this proposed agreement has some information in there that I think needs to be followed up by somebody. For instance, that right now they have a, a market, if, if, if you were going to, you know, sell used solar panels or panels that quit operating, you know, supposedly there's, there's a pretty good market for that kind of stuff. I don't know whether that's true or not true, but I think that needs to get checked in because that's a, I mean, it's a significant number that, that's involved in all that stuff, so I, you know, I don't know what you guys want to do with any of that, but I, and I don't really know what would happen if they go ahead and apply for a, a permit because right now it goes to the BZA and we don't have some of these regs in place that we, that Plan Commission had proposed to adopt. So, you know, I, I don't know, I, I, I actually, I'm not sure what the reaction would be by the BZA if it's the commissioners that are just not following through with supposedly assisting on road use agreement and a decommissioning agreement.
What, what would use panels have to do with us? We're talking about selling used panels.
It, it doesn't have anything to do with us, it's just that in trying to evaluate whether or not that plan adequately covers the expenses for decommissioning solar panels. I mean, I.
I think the road use agreement that we got was from White County, and I know we talked to the highway supervisor down there from White County and it was, it was a very good road use agreement.
There, there were a lot of good things in there, I mean, they're, they're basically making sure that's on their nickel, not, not ours. But I mean, it's, this decommissioning plan, I mean, they're, they're talking like, you know, they could resell these panels for ten million bucks. So, I mean, that's, that, you know, their, their bond would be, you know, some other number, but. That's, if, if you could only sell them for ten thousand dollars, obviously, that's a problem, so. It, it's, it, I guess what I'm saying is, it's, it's a, an agreement that is going to take some, some work, I would think, and may take our investigation and some due diligence on our part to guarantee that the county is protected.
Can you make those changes and some of those suggestions that were made and get it to us?
Yeah, sure. And I can, and I'd be happy to even make comments on what I think we need to further investigate and do or whatever else.
Good. My question is, we told them before to set on this, so do we need, do we need to have a vote? You're going to, for you to move forward?
Well, I, I guess that would be kind of nice.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I think we need a vote. You move forward.
I'll make a motion that.
You didn't vote on it before for me to sit on, so I don't know.
I'll make a motion to have our attorney move forward with suggestions for us to review the, both the road usage agreement and the decommissioning process.
Second.
Motion made and second to have the attorney move forward with the decommissioning road agreements. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm just not even going to vote on it. You know where I'm at. Two oh, one abstention. That's basically it for that. Do any of you have anything else? Do you have anything else? Do you have anything else, Mike?
I do not.
Jim, you have anything? Will be closed? No.
I'll make a motion to.
Second. Motion made second adjourned, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries.